We have received two requests for public comments. Yeah, Monique said she would get up during the public comment section. That's the three-minute time limit thing, I apologize. The next public comment request is from Greg Withers.
ABC. Come here to speak to you about our experience with PLAs, which is, we don't care for them. We have worked with the district in the past. We've done two of your most recent largest projects. I think. Bright Elementary School, approximately $8 million. And the Westmore Oaks. Modernization and the new construction as well, which is about $17 million. One was a hard bid. We came as just an open bid and a contractor in an open bid environment, public contract code. We were low bidder, and that's what started our relationship with Washington Unified School District and the facilities. People that we came to know, your architects that you've used. We submitted then on a lease leaseback, which was the Westmore Oaks project. We were selected, I understand, in a very competitive process between us and other general contractors. As all of us know, lease leasebacks, design builds, etc., they all come with a skilled and trained workforce, which is one of the things that you hear about when PLAs are talked about. I think, I think the project was successful. I hope the district was happy. I think the facilities people were happy. We built that. Project and developed a great relationship. I don't want to see PLAs come into play, which end up excluding me. As a company, our employees that may even live here, we have employees around the area. If a PLA is put on a project in this district, I can't bid it. Therefore, the people that I might have employed here can't work on it. And when you have a prevailing wage project, that's typically what's supposed to level the field between. Union and non-union or merit and non-merit contractors. It's. It's unfortunate that tax dollars. Are then excluded from someone being able to compete in an open market. And that's, that's the really, that's the big thing that we get, we have a hard time with on PLAs. You'll hear about things like safety, you'll hear about things like skilled and trained workforce. I would argue that either side of the fence that you're on in today's day and age between OSHA requirements and any other regulatory fashion that we have as an employer. Employing people in safe, effective, skilled environments, and that's what we do. I just really object to being removed from an opportunity to compete. And that's probably my biggest concern. The gentleman mentioned local hire, and you do hear these things about local. If you read the language in a PLA, local says, starts here. And if you can't staff, you go out to here, you go out here, most of them include nine counties in the region. Thank you.
Our final public comment request is from Nicole.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Washington Unified School District Board of Trustees, I'm Nicole Garing. I am with the. Associated Builders and Contractors of Northern California. So we're a construction trade association and an apprenticeship trade school. So we are, we train students in five trades, carpentry, plumbing, painting, laborers and electricians. And we also oversee the California Fire Sprinkler Association Program. We currently have over 70 apprentices in this area who are needing to work on projects in this region in order to graduate. Become the state's newest journey men and women. And we also have nearly 300 graduates in this area who also would like to work on these projects. Since our time of inception, we've been training apprentices in the construction industry for over two decades. And so our main concerns with project labor agreements are the way that the language is written. So they exclude our apprentices from opportunities to be able to work on these projects. And they also exclude the core workers. Other than a few, select few that are able to work. So majority of these skilled and trained men and women are unable to work on these projects. And a lot of the work that our members do, and they've done well for many, many years, is school construction. And they've done a majority or a lot, a lot of the projects here in the school district. We've had issues in last, last few years since 2015. This district has had a resolution in place that is currently requiring contractors to have a relationship only with the union apprenticeship programs in order to work here. So our apprentices, as back as 2015, have not been able to work on the projects here. And so I'd like to see for that ordinance or resolution to be looked at as well, to possibly be amended to allow for all of the pipelines. So that we can bring everybody in, in order to. Fill this workforce shortage gap that we have. It's massive in the state and all the pipelines that are state approved need to be open and allow for people. In fact, I just had a conversation on a Valley Vision call with one of the representatives from Washington Unified, who actually wants to work with our program. So we're going to have a meeting set up to see how we can work to bring more, more of your students into construction. But the project labor agreement is not the alternative. There are other alternatives out there where you could require have everyone have a skilled and trained workforce in order to be able to work on the projects. There's other things you can do, but project labor agreements, from my perspective and from my experience, have been the most restrictive. And so they actually deny prevailing wage opportunities to the people of this district. And I know that that's not, it's not a goal. The goal is to increase participation in the construction industry. So I look forward to the conversation and, and learning more about. The goals of the district. Thank you for your time. We have another. Okay, I can read this one. I feel tiny since. Sure, okay, this is from, this is a public comment. These are not my comments, the public comment pre-submitted from Eric Christian, Kristen. Project labor agreements are being in 24 states and 11 entities have done the same in California and have done 11 entities have done the same in California. Why? Because in California's case, implicitly and explicitly discriminate against the 87% of the workforce who are union free. PLAs create barriers for local minority and women-owned construction employers and their employees for participating in building their community. Because they contain provisions that do not allow for the full utilization of their own workforces. And force union free workers to pay into union pension plans that will, they will never vested. This is a wage theft. Furthermore, more than 20 studies show these types of agreements increase project costs anywhere from 10 to 30% above prevailing wage. Because they restrict competition. Open competition is healthy and increases quality. It levels the playing field and local money is invested into the community. With the construction market so busy right now and with more work than workers, why would anyone do such a thing that? That makes it less likely that you'll attract bidders. The city of Sacramento saw such a decrease in bidders. They revised its PLAs to exclude certain projects. PLAs exclude men, women and veterans who have chosen to enter into state-approved unilateral apprenticeship training programs in pursuit of a construction career. For the opportunity to work and gain invaluable, invaluable on-the-job training experience that provides stability for them, for their family and their community. Consider the following instead. Continue to bid your work with fair and open competition. What problem exists that the solution in the form of a PLA is to remedy? None. Survey contractors who do work for you and ask them about PLAs. When the San Jose Unified School District and East Bay Municipal Utility District did this, they found that they would receive 50% fewer bidders. And as a result, they chose not to employ a PLA. See attached. Conduct a study session that allows you to hear from both sides. And make an informed decision. Do your research. You will find in just a courtesy study online that these. Agreements are controversial, say the least. Is that what's needed in? Inflationary times like this? Thank you. And those again are public comments submitted.
No other public comments.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Pizzotti, would you like to?
It's just a point of personal privilege. And I take offense to the idea that this is political in nature. The comments that Mr. Markinson made.
I'm going to ask you though to be careful.
I will. I just, he made a comment saying it's political. And that he believes that somebody else brought this to me or to the board or to the district. And it was either brought this to the district. I want to make it very clear, it's purely a matter of me believing in. In this. In this particular agreement or in this particular. Labor force that brought this about. And I don't want to hear that, you know, that this is. Especially when the previous speaker or the email that you just read. Sent me a letter that said, we have raised almost $50,000 to support a candidate. That will help rid Sacramento County of project labor agreements. I take that as kind of a threat, especially since I'm the guy that, who's bringing this to our district. So I just want to make that very clear, that this wasn't political, but it seemingly is becoming that way. Now I'm done.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent of Business Services at Monique Sova is going to take it away for our. Thank you. This evening, we have a presentation. You could even call it a study on project labor agreements. We have invited a variety of industry experts. I would ask them to introduce themselves. We do have some internal team members and then also external members. I'll start first with our new director of facilities. If you could introduce yourself and then we'll go around the room.
My name is Giselle Bagger.
Bill McGuire, consultant to the district.
Samuel Santana, I'm a shareholder with Dennis Walter Kelly and we're a facilities council for the district.
My name is Robert Cooks. I am with the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local 104. For law too, also business representative for local.
Thank you. So the format for our conversation this evening is. A brief overview for you on project labor agreements. And then being available and having our industry experts, including myself, to be able to answer any questions that you may have. So we'll go to the next slide. Again, a review of the purpose is to provide an overview of project labor agreements for board discussion and also obtain board direction regarding project labor agreements. Review the definition of a project labor agreement.
You all are muted. There's no sound.
Yeah, yeah, it was only like.
We thought we were only. We thought we were. We're trying to not make sound with papers. That was our. Tell me what the last thing you heard was.
Literally like, it was only like a 10-second thing. I pressed it right away. I've been hearing the whole.
Okay. So I'll, I'll start here, which I think will be okay. The purpose of our time together this evening is to provide an overview and obtain board direction on regarding project labor agreements. You two may seem or may notice that this presentation looks familiar. Because we believe that what the request was, was to be able to bring this information to the entire board. To be able to have a more well-rounded conversation. And we really wanted everyone to have the same information that was presented at our facilities committee meeting. Next slide. So we'll start with the definition of a PLA. Next slide. A PLA, you may also hear it referred to as, of course, a project labor agreement, a project stabilization agreement, a community workforce agreement, or even a pre-hire agreement. There are several terms, but in essence, we're talking about the same thing. Next slide. So in the definition, a PLA is a contract entered into between a project owner, such as our district. And several building trade unions. The contract is typically designed to govern the employer-employee relations of the general contractor and all subcontractors in connection with a construction project. Next slide. Common components of a PLA. Unions agree not to strike or engage in other disruptive activities and contractors and their subcontractors agree to no lockouts. The employer or contractor recognizes a particular union or group of unions to be the exclusive bargaining. Excuse me, bargaining agent for all employees on the project. And the contractor will hire exclusively from the union halls. Next slide. It also. Many components may include that the employees pay into union dues to be able to have the union represent their interests. It also includes a negotiated management rights clause. And it can govern a single project or numerous projects for a particular period of time or even a particular cost related to that project. Next slide. When we met with the facility subcommittee meeting, they asked that we also provide information about some districts in our area that have project labor agreements. We were able to identify these two districts, Sacramento City Unified School District and Stockton Unified School District. A little bit about their districts. SacCity, based upon a data pulled yesterday, or excuse me, a few days ago, is about 83,000, 84,000 students. And their PLA is for projects $500,000 or more. Stockton Unified, close to 40,000 students, their PLAs for projects at 1.25 million or more. Next slide. So let's talk about the proponent and opponent arguments. With PLAs, one thing that I want to share is that there's research on both sides. There's research that I think supports the proponent argument, and I think there's research that supports the opponent argument. Our goal with presenting the next bit of information is to give you information. That is, is what we've been able to find based upon our research. Not putting in our opinions, but what we've learned from the research that we've done. Next slide. So proponent arguments is that PLAs, they reduce the risk of construction delays. They also reduce the risk of increased costs caused by work stoppages or labor disputes due to the no-strike clause that we talked about a little bit earlier in our presentation. They also use the centralized referral system for union workers. So they have a set of workers that are available for projects. They foster positive communication channels to address worker concerns, grievances, as we mentioned. They represent the employees. And so when there's an issue, they are the representative, like our labor partners within our district for our WUSD employees. They also provide uniform wages and benefits, overtime pay. Hours and working conditions that are, that are on the major construction projects. And that they also reduce misclassification of workers and related underpayment on payroll, taxes, worker cost, worker compensation and other requirements. Next slide. Little bit of research. Some people will say that PLAs are more expensive. Some people say that they're not. The UC Berkeley Labor Center did research. And what they concluded is that PLAs. There's have, there's no statistical evidence that PLAs affect the cost of a project. They recommend that PLAs should only be agreed to by public agencies if the PLA has attractive provisions. And/or provides attractive construction services related to prevailing wage jobs not covered by PLAs. Our, and just a bit of note, our, because we're a public entity, all of our projects are governed by prevailing wage. Which means there's a certain, a set wage that we have to make sure that we pay employees on a project. Next slide. Opponent arguments of PLAs. Opponents say that competition is limited, thus raising project construction costs due to fewer bidders. They also say that PLAs are characterized as union-only agreements, thus making it more difficult for non-union workers to gain employment. Other arguments include that non-union contractors tend not to be bound by PLAs. Requires non-union workers to pay union dues into union benefit plans, which they may not use. And PLAs are unnecessary as pre-qualification procedures may include common PLA provisions such as wage and apprenticeship requirements. And finally, PLAs limit opportunities for women and minority-owned firms and workers. Next slide. In our research, we did find quotes from the National Black Chamber of Commerce and Latin Builders Association. The Latin Builders Association is the largest Hispanic construction company in the United, in the United States. According to the National Black Chamber of Commerce, they state that 98% of black and Hispanic construction companies are non-union shops. Thus, PLAs will limit the opportunities for black and Hispanic firms. The Latin Builders Association believes that PLAs make it more difficult for minority-owned contractors to compete. And they effectively, effectively work against the goals of increasing the number of projects awarded to minority-owned businesses. Next slide. So we also wanted to research. Information that might help us in making a decision regarding PLAs. And so we looked at the California School Board Association and also spoke with several of our community partners who do have PLAs, who worked in districts, who had PLAs. And now work in a district with, that doesn't have PLAs. And we consistently came back to the California School Board Association recommendations that we'll review next. Excellent. So the California School Board Association, CSBA, Construction Management Task Force. Put out a research paper or basically a narrative, which is attached to the handouts for this item. And they have these 14 questions for districts, excuse me, school boards to consider when considering a PLA. I won't read them all, but I just wanted to highlight some of the key components of this. Some things that they recommend that school boards consider are related to construction goals, criteria for quality, cost, value. The level of complexity of a project. Whether or not staff have experienced administering complex projects. Next slide. The duration of the PLA, the likelihood of a disruption to the supply of labor. How subcontractors will be selected. Does the staff have time to research, draft, negotiate, administer and monitor a PLA? And will the PLA be implemented appropriately? Next slide. Would there be any added cost? This one made me pause because we just read that the center, that Berkeley said that there's, there's probably no significant increase in cost. But how I read this is, what are the? Intended costs related to a PLA, if there are any for a district? Will we get the best work for the best price? Does it promote the interest of the district related to employment and training? What will be the effect on workers? What are the long-term effects? Next slide. In my conversations with our community partners and my colleagues. They really recommended that if we are considering a PLA, we need to identify specifically how the PLA will support and benefit our students. Our staff, our district and our community. Next slide. Brief overview of PLA's. So at this time, I'd like to open up to any, any board questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions? Do you have questions, Clerk Vanegas?
Um, I guess a comment and a question. So when this was brought forward, and you guys can hear me, right? I'm good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can zoom out so I can kind of see everybody. But, um, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to kind of bring this to the board because there is many, I guess, benefits, but also just, just questions that I, that I had. And I'd be more than willing, I guess, to, because of, I was allowed time to, to process and also ask questions and do some research. But, but overall, I, I got the consensus as far as what was, what was presented today. Is, is, I got both sides of it from, from people in trades and people in the, in the industry. And I, I guess I would like to move into a direction where we could set a threshold. I, I'm, I don't want to exclude. I, I don't, that, that's not something that I would like to do. I got the same comments from, from different individuals of ensuring that we're not excluding opportunity, especially living where we live and being in the community that we, that we are in. I'd be totally okay with PLA's, but at a, at a threshold, allowing still some projects to be done by non-PLA agreements. Because we, we, we want to get the best, uh, in my, in my opinion. And, and, and that's just so you all kind of see where I'm at already. I would, would it be possible since it seemed like Sacramento has a threshold and Stockton has, would we be able to move into a direction like that? Is that possible? And would be able to formulate a solution similar to that, Monique?
So yes, we can design the, the terms of the PLA based upon however we feel is best for our district. Should that be a financial threshold? Should it be for a specific project or set number of projects? We get to set that particular threshold. And so myself as staff, we would come to you with a recommendation for your decision-making.
And, and I would like to keep that into consideration just because of the, the comments that I've heard, not only tonight, but in the time that we've had, is minority-owned companies not being unionized? And, and I want to make sure that they're not excluded from opportunities. Just to be very clear, it's, I want to make sure that we are not excluding by moving into, I'm not against PLA's, but I am against excluding opportunity for, for especially the community that we serve and, and just individuals that I was able to, to connect with and, and learn from. So that's all, that's just it. Thank you for that, that answer.
Any other questions? Do you have any questions?
I mean, I, I've gathered a lot of information and this was really helpful. I'm not exactly clear on why a PLA, so I guess that would be my number one question. I, I don't feel passionately one way or another. So this is truly information gathering for me and I would have to, I do feel strongly that I do not want to see projects stalled or more, cost more money for our district because these are small projects and we're a small district and we don't need to spend extra money on things that don't benefit student, staff, district and community. So I would just want to know why, like, what does it even look like? I think we have like the arguments on both sides, but I'm not exactly sure what, how it fits into our community. Like, what is a PLA? Why a PLA? What, what, what are we, who is in this PLA? Cause I do see the benefits of, you know, clearly I'm a nurse. I've been in a nurse's union, right? Like, not all unions are created equally, right? That's, this is, so I, I'm like, oh, I'm, yeah, let's just make sure we do what's right for the district. But I just want to be sure that I understand. Are we allowed to ask?
Absolutely.
Well, I don't know, according to board.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Okay. I said, um, this is a study session, so it's a, it's not as formal as, you know, this is an open agenda item in terms of the study session to get your questions asked and to.
Information.
Got it. So that would be my question, why a PLA and how would it fit into the community?
So, um, what we found to work best is, is when we discuss what works best for your, for your specific needs, right? We go into conversations and a negotiation process of what you feel would work best and how we can work with you on those things, right? And then we design the PLA to meet the needs of, of what you need, right? Because.
Then why not a PLA? I mean, why, like, so I guess, why do we need that? Since we're saying that we, because you heard the arguments on both sides.
Right.
I guess you would argue that it's not true that wages are fair and that it's safe working conditions and whatnot, right? With, and it's okay, I'm not genuine, I, I hope no one gets mad at me anywhere, but I just want to know, like, you know, because it does seem like we have a lot of laws in place to be able to, um, to be able to protect. I mean, it doesn't seem like I know that we do. I also own a business that has to follow OSHA guidelines and, um, pay prevailing wages. And of course, we recruit based on how we pay. It's similar to running a school district or I don't run it, but you know, how the school district runs. So I feel like the question would be, because it is concerning to see the, the Hispanic perspective and the African-American perspective, you know, it makes me pause. But again, I don't have any like solid, these are just arguments. So why not a PLA? Does that make sense? I said, why a PLA, but like, if, why a PLA if we have to like sit down and discuss all the things and figure out where it fits in, I guess? Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. Sorry.
And what I'd like to say is from the sheet metal perspective, it's all the different specifics that go into a project. For sheet metal, there's detailing, there's architectural, there's ductwork, there's mechanical acceptance testing. There's service, there's making sure that all of the, the proper education is there, both through our training center, which is a five-year apprenticeship. And in their first week of class, they get OSHA thirty to make sure they're safe on projects, right? That's one of the first things that we teach because we believe in safety. And that's, that's what kind of speaks to your safety concerns. A lot of, a lot of the things that we teach are the why in the training center, to make sure that we're doing things the right way the first time. To make sure that the ductwork size appropriately, to make sure that the hangers are the correct size. And if they're not, that's when we bring up the question, yes, we need to install this. And those questions come up before it's installed, before the, the supplies are on the project. So it increases the efficiency of the project. So what I'm saying is, is, is that skilled and trained portion that may not always be there, that is something we ensure that our, our members and workers have to bring to the job and to your projects.
And are the only people who are able to do these trainings, people who are in that union? The 104?
That apprenticeship program.
Does, how does that benefit our community?
So with more jobs comes more opportunities to your community. Also goes along with the local hire, right? The local hire provisions that were brought up. So we pull from those zip codes and areas first. And that's something that we discuss what works best for your, your needs, right? And pull students from, from these areas and give them more opportunity for these, for these apprenticeships that have healthcare, they have retirement, they have all these things that are going to benefit them in the long-term effects, which was one of the questions, for them to be successful middle-class members of your community.
Hmm, I love that. One of the things that I have heard about our community is that it's small, it's too small for that, that we wouldn't be able to provide enough workforce. And then where would we pull from, from there?
And that's where we have the, the surrounding areas that we pull from, right? So it's still staying close to home, but maybe in your surrounding areas that will still benefit from them going in and out of your area and also benefit.
Can we incorporate local hire too then? Because it would still be your union only. And I'm he, and I'm just hearing that there's a high percentage, what was the number? Eighty-seven? Is that what you said, Monique? Or somebody said there was a, somebody said that.
Uh, you said that in the email.
Oh, it was in the email. Oh, okay. Is, what is the percentage of non-union?
It, I don't have the specifics for your area or, or for Sacramento.
Oh, this is too much.
But I, I know that for sheet metal workers alone, uh, we just indentured forty-one apprentices into our first year and we have over a hundred and sixty in our apprenticeship program. That's just for sheet metal, not counting plumbers and pipe fitters, electricians, laborers, carpenters, all the other unions that are also involved.
Can I speak to that real quick? You asked, you asked what a PLA looks like, Richard Boulevard project that's going up right now, off of Richard Boulevard.
Wait, I'm, I'm really bad with directions, but I'm processing that. Oh, when you exit, when you.
You're going down the five.
Okay.
It's a big office complex, right?
Right. I think I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
Under a PLA, there's also the Sacramento Courthouse, seventeen-story courthouse building. The new, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Sky River Casino in Oak Grove. Which is a perfect example. Um, and on the two jobs in Sacramento, we brought in, it was around ten apprentices from these local hire programs, right? From these zip codes and, you know, some of them being just as involved, uh, you know, things like that into the program. They were part of that forty-one apprentices that came in this year. There's at least ten of them that are from. Um, and then you asked, uh, why not? And then this is anecdotal, but in Uba City, Uba, uh, School District, there, there was a project where they were misclassifying plumbers there. And so they're paying under prevailing wage. So, uh, you know, if the contractor isn't able to, uh, pay those lost wages for that wage stuff, that could fall on the school. Not having control over, uh, your subcontractors and how they're paying their employees.
But if we use a PLA, we would be able to.
You would have more of a guarantee. You have, that's part of our job.
What if you couldn't pay it? I mean.
Well, no, no, no.
Sorry.
Ensure that our, our contractors pay prevailing wage. Our wage is prevailing wage.
Right.
Right? So.
Oh, and we're not vetting that, but we have to. Monique said that we have to.
Been on that one. So all of it is prevailing wage. All of it.
Yeah.
Director of Industrial Relations within the state of California, who has the responsibility, you know, either whether it's PLA or the district. And the funding will come from the contractor because the contractor has been paid for that misapplication because the contractor was paid the prevailing wage of this, right? So it's going to be made up through the DIR and then the DIR is going to find the contractor who has made this misrepresentation about prevailing wage. It's still a block, right? Right, but it's done by the DIR. It's.
Right. It's not.
In this.
I see what you're saying.
You know, who found that out though was, uh, the plumbers. It wasn't.
And that was through policing that public works project.
Because they had representation, you had apprentice that was sent out to this public works job on a DAS. And he wasn't, and he was talking to the other guys about how they want to get paid, what they should be paid.
I appreciate that. It doesn't seem like a huge risk. I feel like that we, that doesn't necessarily help me with gathering my information beside. I do appreciate what you're saying. It feels like less of a risk, but neither here nor there.
I do want to speak to public comment because I know.
You probably have seven hundred questions too, sorry.
No, no, I'm speaking, but I'm to the people in the room who are here as public comment. I know that it's very hard to hear a conversation.
Oh, yeah.
And want to share and want to step in and I absolutely acknowledge that. The way that our board meetings run is with public comment and then with board discussion. And so we've done our public comment now, so I know, I understand it's hard. And if you want to take notes, send us an email or any of those things, that would be the avenue to do that. But we can't, um, do our comments right now. So. Okay.
You've been invited, the union representatives and I don't know Kobe, if, if you've got a particular perspective, but they're being invited here to talk about how great PLA's are. And I appreciate your questions about why no PLA, but asking union representatives, why no PLA? It's, it's a waste of my time.
I hear you.
Comments, but.
I hear you.
I don't have a patience for this.
Okay. Thank you.
May I have a clarification? Is it, I was told that this is an informational meeting.
Information.
No, you're right. Yeah.
Information to the board.
And.
Can I add it?
Um, may I, may I ask it? So you also asked why, why not a PLA? And, you know, I'll ask for the support from, from our partners all around as well. Um, I think there is also a point of clarification that we also create our construction contracts. And so there are components that are attractive in a PLA that should we determine that in our contracts, we want them in there? We can include them in there. We can include, and please correct me if I'm wrong, provisions related to some hiring provisions, et cetera. Is that correct?
Certainly, yeah. You certainly can. That can be in there. Obviously, local hiring, you have to be very careful with that because it triggers a lot of constitutional issues, but you can certainly tailor something like that.
Okay.
Into your, um, construction project protocols.
Okay.
And to, to add to what Mr. McGuire was sharing, um, on our projects, we have prevailing wage and there is a requirement that our contractors submit documentation that they are meeting the rules related to prevailing wage.
In the, so to piggyback on that.
Okay.
So like, um, the important part is that you have three really large projects and that's all you have. There's no small projects in yours. You have just three really big projects, forty-two million, CC two million and about thirty million. That's what you have and everything else. And typically a PLA is surrounded by the bond, not other general labor problems. So just that part alone. The other thing that's important is like SB fourteen twenty-two is gonna, is gonna be on the governor's desk about doing skilled and trade for CMAS projects. If you buy something off CMAS, you've got to have skilled and trade.
Can you explain what, yeah, what's CMAS?
So, oh, CMAS. CMAS is a, uh, it's a procurement vehicle through the state of California that many districts buy different things through. And as part of that bill going through is to ensure that there's skilled and trained workforce provisions. That apprentice program is part of that. You also use best value, least leaseback.
Right.
And in the best value, least leaseback requires that skill, that same skilled and trade workforce. If it's a union contractor, the union would, would do that apprentice work. They would be paid, they would get augmentation to that, that would go to there. Or this group over here would do it for the other group, I'm assuming, since they were, they were talking about. Somebody's going to do that skilled and trained workforce and bringing their apprentices on. So the PLA, a lot of that conversation is about why the PLA is skilled and trained. For you, I think you're going to do least leaseback on your other large projects, been successful. So you have that already, right? The DIR is already part of the process that all California school districts hold and everybody gets prevailing wage. So it's not like I'm going to get a higher wage if I'm in the union or out of the union. I'm going to get that, that prevailing wage. So the issue is, when you have one, is how you write it, right? And so is it onerous, right? It depends. So I talked to Fresno Unified State Center, Sacramento, Sonoma Valley and Santa Rosa City Schools to have long existing or just went through this process. And I talked to the district administration, right? They say that, um, they see, they, what this study says, they believe they get less competitive bids and, and are seeing less bidders. I don't know that, you know, I'm not doing any analysis, it's just, that's what they said. Is it more onerous, onerous? They think they're paying more for their projects because they have a PLA which has reduced that agreement. I talked to three contractors, one which was a hundred percent union shop, one which was fifty-fifty where they had three trades that were union and they had three trades that were not. Uh, and then I talked to a hundred percent non-union shop. Basically what they said was that you're going to see less, um, late workforce because of the PLA. So the PLA will drop out fifty percent or two-thirds of, of the workforce. late workforce because of the PLA. So the PLA will drop out fifty percent or two-thirds of, of the workforce who can, who's going to be competing for these jobs, which then drives up the cost. And an example is, uh, in San Antioide Unified, the Glazers portion of that, which is with the windows and some other things. No one's willing to bid on that job because of the onerous conditions that are in the PLA. So again, if you're going to have a PLA, that's your decision, but what you want to do is go through the process of negotiating what those pieces are and know what's important for you, may not be what's important for the union or anybody else. It's what's important for you to come up with those items that matter to you before you even consider the PLA. What do I want in this PLA? I want large, I, we only have large jobs, so having a smaller set threshold doesn't mean anything because your threshold would be, I want it over thirty million or I want it over forty million, right? So you would want to come up with all of those, those pieces, you know, to, to make it work. And then, you know, there are a lot of talk about strikes and other things, and there are very rare strikes and other things in California in the construction trade. A lot of strikes and other things in public unions, but not in private unions. So again, you'd want to weigh all those things that what's important to you as you're crafting it, you know, with expert here. I'm giving you the anecdotes from, uh, the different people that I've talked to, and I've been doing this for, uh, construction management school this for forty years and have seen all of that, right? But you're, in the end, you have to come up with a really detailed, in-depth study of what you would want. Not just, I'm going to sign a, a PLA like Sac City has or like Fresno Unified because you're not that. You're very different. Your bond is very different. Your local community is very different.
Can I rephrase for the group that means Bill, that we could decide to do a PLA for just certain trades?
Oh, yeah.
So we could make it a smaller scale PLA potentially if that was something that you were interested in. So it doesn't necessarily have to get down to the level of the Glazers. It could be, you know, the, the largest dollar amounts, the three largest dollar amounts on the project or somebody more of a compromise too.
And if you were doing construction management and, and a delivery method of that, so you got, is it designed bid build, least leaseback, construction management, multiple prime, that would be the perfect where you would say mobile prime. I'm going to have the, I'm going to have the construction of the building by, uh, the structural folks as part of that PLA, but I'm not going to do all the rest of this.
And to explain what Bill just said, there's, there's three different ways to do construction. Um, and so he just explained that. And so certain construction methods might be more, more, um.
Are, are we doing?
It might be.
Least leaseback?
Yes, we.
We're doing.
That's why the only few projects we've done least leaseback.
I just don't totally understand least leaseback. Can you walk me through that? Sorry.
I'm going to ask Bill as the expert, um, to be able to do a very, very brief.
Yeah, I think you guys put that in place.
No, I know. I just want to completely like from beget, because I think that I under, and I want to know the very stark differences because I think that because when I, when we're talking about all of this and, and, you know, the differences that are.
I can give.
I want to be sure that we're, sorry.
I can give you a quick overview.
Yeah, I, yeah. I think I understand, but I want to be sure that I fully answer.
So.
What we're talking about.
Case line for public agencies, for school districts in particular, if you have to bid out construction projects over the bid limit.
Right.
Think you guys are cut up.
Right.
Which is an alternate bid limit. Um, anything over sixty thousand dollars would have to be bid out, which means, uh, staff would issue a bid. The lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Hmm.
Get awarded that project if anyone.
Right.
Okay. Least leaseback and a couple of the other methodologies Bill mentioned are exceptions to bidding where you don't have to bid it out.
Hmm.
Okay. For least leaseback in particular, you can go through a request for proposals process.
Hmm.
What happens is the district, uh, adopts the best value methodology.
Hmm.
They say, okay, these are the criteria that we're going to take into account in this request for proposals in selecting a contract. So we're not going to go only based on price. We're going to go based on this best, best value methodology. The district also has to adopt a prequalification process where you're going to prequalify all your contractors and your mechanical, electrical and plumbing subcontract.
Hmm.
So those are two board actions that need to take place. Once those are in place, issue the RFP for a construction project and then you select a contractor based on, um, the application of that criteria that were adopted. Whoever scores the best gets selected to, uh, take on that construction project. And as Bill mentioned, uh, prevailing wage is part of all construction projects.
Hmm.
Um, skilled and trained workforce requirements are part of, um, least leaseback, um, projects where union labor is included in that. So that's kind of the ten thousand foot overview.
Let me just throw that why you, why you would do least leaseback. So in design bid build, I have the architect, I have the builder, and I have the district.
Right.
And many times, uh, they're not on the same page and that's where we see, uh, large change orders. We see the picture of the boat that's giant and, you know, it's called the change order.
Right.
Full contract because that doesn't work. Things that Robert was talking about where it's not right in the drawings and the scope and everybody's after everybody.
Hmm.
Least leaseback tries to bring the architect, the contractor and the district together early to review the plans to get all that stuff out of the way that becomes a problem in during construction.
Right.
So you're setting the, the process up to be a winner in least leaseback, lowers change orders, all those kind of things. And, and typically it works.
Hmm.
Right? Typically, it doesn't work all the time, but typically it works.
And I, and I, I appreciate that because the reason I'm asking is because I feel like there is regardless, a lot of back, uh, a lot of, a lot of extra work on the part of the district. Where it's like, if you're, if we're going to have least leaseback, we're going to have a PLA or design bid build, we're going to do, we have to do the, we obviously always have to do the vetting. I don't know if it, if I'm making sense about what is included in the whole process and project. Like, okay, Monique, go ahead and do that too. Like, you know, it's like, what is, what, and so we talk about student, staff, district, community for our staff. Is this the best route is my question. Like, my head is trying to process moving forward, what the best route for our staff will be too, right? We don't want to spend too much money. We don't want to not have our community have jobs. We want our students to thrive. You, you know, so we want, and we want our, did I already say staff to be able to, yeah, like, yeah, so, yeah. And, and we don't want to spend too much money unnecessarily. We would if it would benefit our kids, but is it? I don't know. So that's why I'm asking. So thank you for that. And I hope that the community understands that if they're curious, because these are very, um, technical. I happen to come from a construction family, so I, I heard about all of the hurdles along the way. It's home building, not big buildings, but still a lot. So, okay, thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Um, I just, I wanted to reference a couple of things that you guys shared and then I was wondering if I'd have a couple of minutes to do that or maybe answer a couple of questions that were in the presentation. If you are, uh, some of the goals from PLA, right, is construction quality, which you're, uh, speaking to. The construction cost and value, right? We don't want to cost the, the district any more money than it needs to spend. Pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs, that's exactly what we offer and they're state accredited. Reduce work delays. We've discussed that. Worker healthcare and pension benefits. We want people to be able to retire successfully at a, at a healthy age. Um, and again, this is all coming from the Sacramento, uh, or sorry, California School Boards Association from, from what their consultant came to a conclusion of. At the end, it says here, the objective expressed in the resolution of securing quality construction at a competitive price, on-time project completion without labor disruption while providing career opportunities for the district students and graduates. And fairness in the process have a greater likelihood of being met utilizing a PLA. Talking about bids and, and what you get, um, that you're receiving less bids. I can speak to, uh, one of the recent projects for Consumer Services District on a smaller project like, uh, a fire station. They received nine total bids. It was covered by a PLA.
Is that a lot?
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. For me, you'll see four or five bids. So, um, in this area, there, there, you're highly likely to receive more than your, your average number of bids on PLA projects. And that's, that's due to the, um, the success of the, the apprenticeships. And, and how well that work is performed. And that's why there's been these agreements popping up left and right, right? Stockton, Sac City Unified for these school districts because it's promoting those students and graduates to get into these successful middle-class jobs. I can't, I can't say that enough because I'm, I'm a test to it, right? I came out of the Marine Corps. I didn't have anything. I didn't have a career to go to, but getting into this apprenticeship has allowed me to purchase a house. I now am married with four kids and a house and living successfully, and it's because of what I've been provided through, um, through my membership and, and through this work. And that's, that's why I'm a, a strong advocate for why it works and how it can work for you and your community members.
Can I speak to one more of those claims? Uh, the, uh, the claim about, uh, requiring, uh, non-union members to pay into our trust funds. That, uh, there is a, uh, uh, a Supreme Court decision that outlawed that, so that is not true.
May I ask a question? You said trust funds?
Yes, or dues. Same thing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So can I ask them a terrifying, because it does say, um, non-union, I was looking at the CSBA language, uh, non-union workers, uh, paying union dues for the length of the project and non-unionized contractors following union rules on, uh, pensions and working conditions. So when you read that, you would assume that others can also apply for these positions. So can you just speak to that a little bit of what that, what that looks like in terms of, um, is this open for others to bid also? But then they're following these, these rules and paying.
Terms and agreements of the PLA. So the terms of the PLA are the, are the. But they can be non-union. And well, it's the, it, it really, yeah, it's very technical relative to that. Most non-union contractors will pass on a district with a PLA because of the onerous conditions that they think, just what we talked about, are in, uh, in the PLA agreement. So it all depends on how, what you negotiate, right? And you have to, you have to bring it out. So it's basically what we're negotiating. Most of, most of these agreements that are already in place do not have what you're talking about.
And then.
Just plain and simple, here it is. And they're, and they were written and, um, agreed to, uh, by the district. But written and agreed, written by someone else and agreed to by the district.
Uh, before you ask your question, I'm going to, maybe to go with the point though about, uh, staffing too, is can you just tell us who from district side would be in the room in this discussion if we move forward with the PLA? I think that would be helpful for us.
One of my questions, so.
So that would be, that would fall on me.
Okay.
And our, uh, facilities director.
Okay.
With the consult, with the consultation of our legal counsel. Okay. It is helpful though to know.
And they, their job would be to bring back an agreement that would meet the goals, but important. As a district board, you should set those goals before they go do anything.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Jesse Vasari.
Okay. Um, I just want to say, I kind of, I, I listened to Clerk Venegas and I concur with him. I think the best way to approach this is through certain threshold, much like the way SAC and, uh, SAC and Stockton Unified have done, done theirs. Um, that does, it makes a lot of sense on how to, uh, adjust this. And while I, you know, I believe in making sure that the workforce is treated fairly and appropriately and that we are hiring diverse, inclusive workforce, uh, local workforce. I want a pathway for our kids to have good career jobs, ones that may not be on their way to college. Ones that may need, you know, a pathway in the trades. And this is an excellent way to do it, in my opinion. And that's something that I think our district has has suffered from is that we didn't have a good pathway and a good stream, you know, streamlined tunnel, uh, to go into an apprenticeship program. So that's something that's really been weighing heavily on my mind. And I, I'm, I'm more concerned about the workers that are going to be on the jobs than the construction companies that hire them. Then I, you know, to me, I'm, it's kind of like when you when you put together, and I, my background is labor, like I'm a labor lobbyist. I don't make my, you know, any, any, uh, any qualms about who I am and what I believe in. And it's in my blood and who, who I am as a person. So I don't, um, I don't like seeing things where wage theft has happened or, um, complaints against corp, uh, contractors have happened, which I've got like seven pages here of a bunch of, you know, complaints against contractors for violations of the law. So I want to make sure that our, our, our people that are working on our, on our projects are paid fair wages. They're getting healthcare. They're getting pension plans. I, I want to make sure that these people, um, are going to have a good career path. So to me, especially if they're local hires, especially if it's diverse and inclusive. I want to make sure that that's something that we're fostering and promoting. So I would agree with Clerk Venegas. I think that's the direction we should head.
Can I?
Yes, absolutely.
Just because you piggybacked on some of those and, and we agreed on, on some of it. I think really the conversation is, um, what works best, like what's tailored? It's not a yes on PLAs or no on PLAs. I think we're hearing, um, the positives and also just the, the concerns. Um, so I'm just going to add to, uh, the diverse and inclusive owned businesses being a part of the conversation so that we can start those relationships, especially for me, that would be a threshold, making sure that it's, uh, we're being inclusive. The second thing would be what percentage of local hires, um, i- if we are talking about whether, whether they're union or not. Like we want, we want to ensure and guarantee that this is going to benefit the community that we serve. And then third, the students, uh, you know, with, where, again, whether it's union or not, I think whether PLA can come to the table or a union-based company can come to the table with what we're asking, great. At the same time, if a non-union, um, company, um, can come to the table with what we're asking and making sure that one, local students and, so those are my three is, is students, local employment and being diverse and inclusive in who in, in owned company, companies, not just, um, people out on the field. So, so I, I would definitely push for that. Um, as far as the threshold on project amounts, um, I think like, I think what we mentioned, it's, it's really just three large projects that we're looking at as far as, um, making sure that we're, that that's a conversation that is effective. And, and, you know, I, I believe is this, would this be the first year or the first time that we are going into this conversation about using PLAs is, is this, is this the first time or have we done this in the past?
Yeah, I believe it is.
I, I don't have any history that we've, we've considered PLAs at this level.
Can we, can we do term? Like, can we do, because we are going into this, if we, if this is the first time, um, like, you know, I'd like to see options where I don't want to feel like we're making a decision that just lasts forever. Like we, we can be, you know, selective in saying, let's go into a term. Let's go into, let's create, we don't have data, right, of our own, right? If, if basically if we're going into this for the first time, we don't have our own collected data. We don't know how it's operating within our community. Being able to see an option that can be a term, if that's a possibility, um, being able to collect our own data and seeing how it's affecting and tailored to our community, um, I think we can, uh, instead of thinking without data, I think that's the thing we're, we're comparing to a SAC Sacramento and we're not Sacramento, right? We're, we're attempting to handle.
Right. We are.
Attempting to kind of do.
Of those.
Yeah, we're, we're attempting to do our best, but I think ultimately we're just, I, I don't want to be in a position where we're just hoping it's going to work out. Like if we can really just be specific, for me, it's those three. Um, whether it's a, again, a union, union-based company or not, I was, I mean, part of it. I was a part of a union myself. At the same time, I'm a business owner that, that doesn't have a union. So it's just, I can see both sides and I just want the best ultimately. And if we state that upfront, I'm with not thinking, I'm not in the thinking of yes on PLAs or no. It's just more so, let's, let's move towards it, but let's come up with something that we feel comfortable with. And also if we can add a term to it, to then come back and look at our own data, then make those, those decisions. Because we, we're using data to make our decisions on everything else. I know, I know I look at it and I know our superintendent is big on data. And if we're using data to look at everything else that's going to benefit our district, why not set ourselves up to use data again to see what evidence and how, how we can best move forward after looking at what, what we've, what we've compiled.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing from some, so I'm just going to kind of talk this over and see if we're in agreement on this. Our entering into a conversation and looking especially at local hire, looking at diverse workforces. I would add to that, that when we had an agreement with the carpenters apprenticeship program that we had, we have a pathway here in construction in Washington Unified. We have a lot of great pathways here. We put into an agreement that our female students had some priority. Because that is a, we know that women are very much underrepresented in the trades and they're strong, good paying jobs. And so we, that was the way to do that. But the out was if there is not a woman that applies, then you know, there's a backup. But we want to make sure that we're giving preference. And so I think that, that, that type of language, I agree is, is really important. I'm hearing the idea of a pilot or of a short-term agreement to look at in terms of timing and then do the data to see what it sounds like. I would also add to that is I just recently, this is a very small project, but I just put out to beta project for Big For B that we're doing. And I got one bid, so hard to find contractors right now. And it was double what it would have been a year ago. So, you know, I think that if, we also need to have an out if we get one bid or if there's something like that. I think that that's an important place that we can look at putting it back out to bid would be important to me. But I'm comfortable moving forward. I think the thresholds for me at Sac City is too low. They are much bigger than we are, but I think that it's, it's too low. And I'd like to have a higher threshold in terms of making sure that we, that we're looking at this only for our biggest project. So how do you feel about that moving forward?
I agree.
Is that what I'm hearing? Does that capture it fair?
Having a conversation, you mean to?
Moving forward towards a PLA discussion with these as some priorities right now.
Yeah, I think those are good priorities. I mean, I wonder if we also, is a PLA the only pathway? Because when I was running, when I was doing research, you know, into whether or not I want to be on the school board. I had three staff members tell me that we need to improve our technical pathways and programs are. No, that's not the work, maybe. What'd you say? Yes, that's it. CT. Oh, I thought you said something else. I thought you said certificated. I was like, no, CT, yes. And so I'm like, don't, I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into like this PLA is going to fix something for our students. That's not maybe as strong as it should be in the district. So I want to be sure that if there are other areas that we need to focus and to get our kids trained to want to pursue those types of careers, that we would do that. I don't know that a PLA is the only answer. I'm not saying that it's not either. I just don't know why we would just start with that. Maybe there's a good reason.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing, and I also heard your conversations, that we could look at a few different traits, sort of small. Am I correct in that conversation and those talks too? But I think that I'm prepared to move forward with those conversations, given the parameters we talked about. And it looks like three are, and I hear you though, that you're, you still have questions as we come through. This is not done. It's going to come back and there will be more conversations to be had.
This is just giving direction to move forward, correct?
You asked for direction at the beginning, is that correct? So the purpose is to provide an overview.
Yeah.
And then have direction on, do we continue a conversation? Do we continue research or not? That's, that's what we're seeking. And it sounds to me, the big decision, as if the direction is, is to continue the conversation, continue the research. Right? Some priorities are students, local, and that's workers and companies diversity. Potentially would, or would a pilot or excuse me?
Local hire as well.
Yes. Look into whether or not there could be a pilot or short-term agreement that would give us enough data for us to be able to assess the, the efficacy of a PLA in our district with our data. And then also in our research, would it be in our best interest if we did enter into a PLA to have some type of provision in there? If we felt as if we didn't get enough bids, then we would have other options. Evaluate the threshold, what would make sense for our district. And also, and this is where I'd like a little more clarity, is in essence, I think I'm hearing that we want to evaluate our current CTE pathways and understand that there's not just one solution to provide opportunities for our students. That entering into a PLA will not be our solution to improve it. And evaluate the other options that we have, including implementing those options. Is that?
One thing that I also heard from you was, is this good for the staff? Is this the right thing for the staff? So kind of the conversation that didn't come out in that final goal. Is this a good thing for this district and the staff that you have to complete this, this work?
Yes.
One other clarification. We were speaking to only the Elkhorn Village project and the Brooklyn Arts Center.
No, Westfield.
Westfield Two is what's called a PLA.
Yeah, it's the first project.
At this point, we've already entered into our least least back agreement. So it would have to be other projects. And I think I need to clarify, are, is the direction that we enter into our conversations specifically for our bond-related projects?
My feeling is that those meet the threshold and I don't want to tie up every project that we have with this conversation to move forward on other.
Yeah, I don't think so. We don't have anything.
We'd sure love money to do all of our, look at this thing we're in.
We don't, we don't have that kind of money.
Thank you for that.
Over budget as it is. You're over budget.
Do you have anything else, Clerk Vanegas?
I'd like to add just for the community that the conversation that we're having, one, I appreciate the fact that we're looking, I think we're all centered around the word effective, right? What's best for students, staff and our community. So I'd just like to appreciate you all for not looking at this as in this or that, but more so the this and that mentality. You know, we're not looking for one solution, but we're looking to create what works best for our community. So I just want to say that this, this conversation is, is is effective. We're, we're starting with the idea of what's most effective and not coming in it from, again, already a fixed mindset in a sense, but more so looking to learn. So I appreciate Kristy Barnes, your, your questions and just overall, the conversation that we're having is, is intended to tailor exactly what can be most effective for, for our community. So, so I appreciate you all.
I do want to make one comment about our pathways. I'm pretty damn proud of our pathways.
Yeah, me too. I, I have a, yeah, I need to clarify that too. I did not mean that I am not proud of what we are doing. If there is room for improvement, what does that look like?
Yeah.
Please hear me, community.
Yeah, how do we work with?
Yeah.
Those out, where our kids will be going.
We have incredible pathways and I am very proud.
But I would say to speak to that, like we do all of the, with our home run initiative, right? Kids are doing internships. That doesn't solve the problem of every kid in the district. That's what, you know, maybe fifty, I don't know. But it's really important for those kids. That's a huge deal. And so if we can get kids to say, hey, when I graduate this, I already know I have an in right here, even if it's not all of our kids. I mean, I think that that has value. So, yes.
I just wanted to speak to one thing that you guys are talking about your pathways. I've actually had conversations and done two presentations for your CTE program with Jason Billington, had good conversation with him and got good feedback from the students in his classes. What I would really like to present is that the district is also employing the graduates that are coming out of that program and being able to put them on projects in your area would be something that I'd really like to be able to say. And so I think it would, it would speak both to the students, the teachers and to your development of, of the students and their ability to work in, in the area.
Absolutely. Yeah, they make a good tiny house. All right. And do you have, feel like you have your direction now in clarification? Okay. Well, thank you all for giving your time this evening. Thank you also for coming to give public comments. And it, I think that this was a good discussion. I appreciated though that everyone really came together, gave their evening and, and we stuck pretty close to our time. All right. So with that, we will close our, this special Washington Unified Special Board meeting. And we will see you at our next regularly scheduled board meetings.